Roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Present.
Dr. Kincaid?
Present.
Mr. Newsom?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Present.
This is true.
We are all present. Thank you very much. At this time, we have public comments. We have one person that would like to address the board. Anna Scott. Anna is a parent and the ACT president. She's going to discuss the central enrollment process.
I feel really assured from right here, President Clark and members of the board. As a teacher and a parent, the central enrollment process this year, I really enjoyed it. I've, you know, have gone through it the last few years as a teacher and also I have five kids that attend Ponca City Schools. And I know that there's still some kinks to work out. It's the first year. But I think that with the staff and everybody working as hard as they can, I really did like the way that it was all in one spot for all of the kids and I didn't have to go to several different schools. And all of my questions were answered right away. So I just wanted to let you guys know that. And kind of, I want to switch my hat here a little bit also and talk as president of the association. And I just want to mention, I don't get up and talk many times unless it's something, you know, coming up, like switching something or telling you about something specific. But I just really wanted to tell you that as an association, we've talked on numerous times, and I'm also on the Board of Directors for OEA, and I talk to other districts and how nice it really is to work with and for a district that is so progressive and nice and pleasant and there's not, you know, a lot of dissension. It's just really, really nice to work with you guys. And I just want to let you know how much we do appreciate you as a teachers' association. Last year, we got a nice raise and that was really, really nice. And you'll be looking at the contract coming up. And I hope that, you know, you guys take those into consideration whenever you look into that, that we really do appreciate you and everything that you do for Ponca City and its teachers.
Thank you, Anna. I just want to reinforce what Anna said about the central enrollment process. I'm going to talk about it a little bit more later. But, you know, we've heard some folks that were unhappy, especially last week, the people who missed the first window for enrollment. But I think overall, it's really been a positive experience and it really, I think, helped everything start a little smoother. So thanks, Anna, for those comments.
Thank you. Moving on to presentations. The CIPA presentation from Ryan Dooley.
Ryan is filling in for Jason Ryan there. You know, Jason is our Director of Technology, but for some reason, the Army continues to think they need Jason more than we do. And so while Jason is in San Antonio, training troops to go to, I'm not sure if they're going to Iraq or Syria, if we even know where they're headed. But I think he's supposed to be back in October. Is that right, Ryan?
September, October timeframes, what we're looking for. That's what we're hoping, crossing fingers for.
The sooner the better?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right. Good evening, guys. We're, I'm just going to go over something that we've all probably heard a time before, at least once before. It's the Children's Internet Protection Act, or sometimes it's called SIPA. Since we, to be in compliance with this, we have to meet yearly and just open this up for presentation or discussion, just to stay in compliance. Since we are a school that receives E-rate and OUSF credits, we have to maintain this compliance. What this means is we have to have some kind of technology protection measure in place. And it also requires that we, for adults, that we block visual depictions of obscene and/or child pornography, and for minors, the same, plus the added stipulation that we block things that are harmful to minors. And it also requires that we establish a policy to ensure safety and security for minors while they're using email, chat, direct communication with teachers and other students, and provide, as well as provide education on how to navigate the internet effectively and safely. As a district, we're using a product called Lightspeed. It allows us to differentiate filtering between students and staff and as well in the minors to ensure that the proper policies are in place. And there's also curriculum in place in 5th and 8th grades to instruct kids on how to use the internet effectively and safely. And that's pretty much it. Is there any questions?
How'd we do last year? Give us about a 30-second flyover. Did we have much abuse? Did you, Lightspeed have to kick in and catch a bunch trying to do things they shouldn't? Or what's your evaluation of last year?
It's a daily thing. I mean, we have reports sent to the principals at the high school and junior highs. We don't really have much going on at the elementaries that would be really to speak of. But, you know, 8th and up, we have daily reports sent to principals so they can address issues. We have, the two reports we have are just basically internet access. That shows, it's just a log of everything that kids do. And then one that's really more important is the suspicious search. Now, sometimes I'll get flagged by a completely innocuous search. Like if they're looking up something like abortion, or, you know, for a school report, or something like that, or suicide, it's going to flag it because it's going to think that the student may be facing an issue at home that may need to get a counselor involved, but it's not necessarily going to block it. And those are kind of reports that we generate and we send to the principals every day so they have something to look at, so they can kind of see where things are. Some of it, you know, there's going to be the individuals that, they're just going to try and get through it. And for the most of it, it's just a security to be in compliance.
So your group's more of a watchdog that just turns the information to the site manager?
Generally, that's what we try to do. We try to maintain, we put, our group puts the policies in place, and then we, you know, react to requests from various departments, whether or not they, if they want something extra added, or sometimes things get blocked mistakenly, something that's needed for the classroom and it gets flagged as something that's not. So we, you know, we manage that part of it. And the part that where it becomes being abused, that's why we send the information to the principals occasionally. Depending on what it is, we may get involved directly with the principals. But we just provide the information then for them to take the necessary action.
And Ryan, Robin, what happens, and, you know, it's a fine line. I mean, our high school would like everything to be open, and then we shut things down as necessary. But the approach we take is that we're going to block, and if there's an academic reason for students having access to a site, then it's very simple to contact Ryan and then he can open that site. And it may not happen in five minutes. It takes planning, and that's the thing that, you know, kind of gets in the way sometimes. You know, Ryan, I think last year, we had maybe two or three times that we turned reports over to administrators and counselors because we had students maybe that we thought might be getting ready to harm themselves. And so we did that. We, and we do, you know, so basically, there's a report and it's, it kind of looks like this. And it will list on there different sites that students tried to access during a 24-hour time period. You can sometimes tell when a site's gotten to be popular because it's something you've never heard of before, and there it is. And so, but we watch that pretty regularly. Ryan, one thing I'd like for you to talk about, you know, we've been in the one-to-one initiative now for about four or five years. And every year, board members will get phone calls. I'll get a phone call and somebody says, "My child is using the school computer to look at pornography." Okay? And tell us how that can't happen.
Okay. Generally, what we, what we establish is we establish policies, and especially for our one-to-one, we have a policy that, that when they take the machine off our network, it's still filtered. So when they take the machine home and they're on their home internet, they're still getting the same policy, even sometimes a little bit more strict policy than when they are at school. Now, we've had individuals do, download it on to other devices. So they'll go home, hit the internet on their parent's computer, their friend's computer, whatever, put it on a flash drive, and then start sharing it with other students. We've had that happen, but they didn't get to it from our device. They just managed to get it on our device because we can't disable flash drives because that's part of the collaborative work that they're doing in the classroom. So we have had that happen. And we have had students attempt to bypass the filter and break the connection. We have had that. But as soon as we see that, we react to it. We establish, because sometimes as updates, generally what happens, as soon as they, they'll keep trying, somebody will find a way through, and then we have to react and get the updates. And, you know, so occasionally, it's not 100% foolproof, unfortunately, because there's always somebody trying to break it. But that's the minority. It's a smaller portion that actually attempt that, you know, handful in the entire district. But we are really careful to make sure that this is something they can't access because this is part of our funding. If we don't do this, we, you know, we're in risk of losing our funding. So this is something we really take seriously to make sure that they don't have that access.
And kids are good with computers, you know? I mean, that's, so, anybody have any other questions for Ryan?
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Ryan. Nice presentation. At this time, we'll have the superintendent's report. Dr. Pennington?
We've already talked a little about central enrollment. I would just, you know, we, if you think about how we got here, is this time last year, we had just gone through enrollment at the high school. And if you remember, several members of the board expressed frustration that they had heard from parents about high school enrollment and the amount of time that it took, spending time in line, all the things they'd gone through, discussion with parents who had children in multiple sites. And so they had to enroll at Woodlands and they had to enroll at West, and then they had to enroll at the high school. And so we started looking for ways to solve that problem. We brought in an outside consulting firm, ADPQC, process management firm, and they helped us develop the steps which have become our central enrollment process. And, you know, I, to be honest with you, with the exception of the fact that we have more first graders than we have space for, this is probably from my perspective, I've had less phone calls from parents about enrollment and about the process of enrollment than I have any time in my previous 11 years here in the district. And I, you know, I know you guys, last year, I had phone calls after high school enrollment. And I, so how, I mean, what are you hearing from the public?
From what I've heard, it's been positive. I mean, there's always, I think some of the people that I've talked to was worried about the girls working there from the people that were, that would get aggravated, but it wasn't that many. But...
A little bit of concern on parking, but that's to be expected.
Yeah. You know, what we found, we had, and is Barbara in here to correct me if I'm wrong?
Yep.
I think, Barbara, we had about 800 students who, when we compared the address they brought to us, remember, we made them bring us an electric bill or some official proof of residence. So in the past, you know, we just took somebody's word that they lived at 613 Broadway. Well, this year, they had to bring us proof of where they lived. And I think that when we ran that report and compared the address they gave us last year with the address that they proved us they had this year, Barbara, was it about 800 addresses that were different? And some of that, I'm sure, was because of moving. But we also think that maybe some of it was that, that maybe we weren't getting the accurate address all the time of where people lived. So we feel good about where we are, and we feel really, really good that we really know where the students, at least when they start School Thursday, we know where they live. This will give us an opportunity to look at our school boundaries and see whether or not we need to make some adjustments in our school boundaries. We do have two hotspots, and that is first grade at Woodlands and first grade at Union. And in both of those schools, we are, we're over. And by, what do you mean by that? Well, we mean we're over, even regular over. If you remember, the House Bill 1017 set a class size limit of 20 kids per classroom. And then they set some rules on how many more kids you could have before you had to hire an aide. And then they had a rule that when you got nine over, I believe, at the elementary school, you were supposed to hire another teacher. Those rules have not been in effect since the recession in 2008. The legislature has suspended those rules every year. So we kind of set our own rules. And our own rule was that we were going to keep our class sizes at the early childhood levels to 27 kids in a classroom. Now, that's already seven kids more than House Bill 1017 authorizes. Okay? Well, at Woodlands and Union, we have 54 students who live in the Woodlands attendance zone. We have 64, I'm sorry. And then we have, I believe it is, is it 68, Terry? Is Terry here? For 14 over at Union, 10 over at Woodlands. So we are moving students because not every first grade classroom across the district is full. And so we are in the process now of transferring students from Woodlands to either Trout or Garfield. We have space available in both schools. And then students from Union, we are transport, we are sending to Lincoln. Now, when we do that, we provide the transportation. And so we look for places where there are spots available, and then we look at where we have buses going so that we can do that. Obviously, this is, this is tough for parents. You know, I don't think any of us can fault anyone who lives in an attendance zone and that's where they want their children to go to school. But 27 kids in the classroom's enough. And we just can't go over that. Now, if every classroom in the district were full, if we had 27 in every first grade classroom, then obviously, we'd have to go back and start with 28 and 29 and 30. But we're not there yet. We have done everything we know to do to try to hire teachers. We have, Shelley and I had a conversation today. We've had an early childhood position open for, how long, Shelley?
Oh, since last year.
Since last year. And when's the last time we had an application from an early childhood teacher? A legitimate application? June. They're just not out there. There are not any teachers certified to teach early childhood that are applying for us. And that's not only the work we do with our state search engines, but you guys approved an expenditure two months ago to allow us to search nationally. And the bottom line is, we're, I'm just thankful that we have as many teachers as we have. I'm thankful that we're not sitting here with classes, with 47 kids in a classroom, or 27 kids in a classroom, and not a teacher for that classroom, like some districts are across the state. So it's not going to be fun. You know, Terry Vogel has had to have some very tough conversations with parents today. I'm sure that we will probably lose some kids. There will probably be some parents who opt to either homeschool their children, or to take them to another district, or to maybe to one of the private schools in town. And they obviously have the option to do that. It's a situation that none of us like. But we don't see that we have any choice. And so as you get those phone calls, just know that we've done everything we can do. The only choice we have now is to find them a place to go to school where there's a slot. I've had some conversations with parents today, and, you know, I get to decide where my kid goes to school. No, you don't. If I live in the district, I, you can't send them anywhere else. No, that's not true. You know, those district boundary lines are arbitrary. We always have the inherent right to put children wherever we think the best placement for them is. And we'll continue to exercise that with as much class as we can, with as much understanding as we can. But just know that it's been pretty tough in this building today. And the good, this happens every year. It's probably, it's probably a little unique that it's been two first grade class buildings. Usually, it'll be first grade in one building and fourth grade somewhere else. For whatever reason, we've got an awful lot of first graders this year. And Barbara, anything else you want to add about enrollment?
We pull the information, Power School timestamps. So when the student, the parent came in to register their student, Power School timestamps, the time of the day when they came in. So it's easy for us to pull that information to know, you know, which kids were the last ones. So...
So I want to make sure you understand that. So we know when they enrolled. And so the students who are being, who are having, who we're contacting and telling them there's not room at their site for them, then those are the last 10 that enroll. Those are the students that were moved into another site. And, you know, again, if something, as movement occurs during the year, and it's not unusual for us to have, you know, some kids in school in September, and by October, they've moved somewhere else. And so as that happens, obviously, we'll bring those kids back to, again, we have that list. We know who those kids are. We can contact and offer them an opportunity to go back to their home school. Traditionally, what happens is when they've been in school for a month, they don't want to change because they've made friends and they've decided they like the teacher. And the fears they had about going to school somewhere else have kind of dissipated. Okay? Any questions about enrollment? If you know somebody with an early childhood certificate, send them our way. We'll, we were really excited this morning. Went to Shelley's office. And as we were talking, an application came up from an early childhood teacher. We thought we'd hit the jackpot. They haven't finished their, their community college degree yet. So they've still got a long ways to go. But we have their application on file. We'll be ready in three years. Next is proposed board policy updates. You've got, hopefully, I believe you all had a list, had copies of the board policy changes. I'm not going to read all these to you, but just, I'll point out some highlights. These are all changes that have, that are made because of changes in either state or federal law. So, you know, we talk about this a lot. You're being asked to make changes, which you really don't have any choice. You have to make them. Okay? And we have several policies that have language about nondiscrimination. And in those policies, we are, we are, we are adding words, we are adding pregnancy, gender, gender expression of identity. We're also adding the words nationality, or, excuse me, the words nationality and religious views have been removed from nondiscriminatory language. On school bullying, we now have added language that says, that added to the investigative process of a bullying incident is the reason for actual or perceived bullying. Safe school committees will now include suicide prevention resources in its behavioral resources. So suicide prevention is now going to become a part of the work of safe school committees. We've had a change in the open records documentation in that we used to say that we'll charge $100 an hour for data collection. But since that, most of that can now be provided electronically. That fee has been taken out that we can charge for the hourly rate of the people who have to assemble the material. We have some changes on teacher termination and evaluation. It has to do with the quantitative part of the teacher evaluation process being delayed for, I believe it's two more years, Shelley? Okay. We have changes in student residency policy. It has to do with homeless students and students who are not documented citizens. Reading Sufficiency Act has extended reading sufficiency to first, second, and third grades. We've always done that. It's not, we've always collected this data. This isn't a big change for us. Now, we have to have cardiac, sudden cardiac arrest education for students who are participating in extracurricular activities. And that's something that we have to, we're actually doing now as we conduct our physicals and get ready to start football practice. I am asking the board to adopt a new policy, policy 2.22, and this is a policy for charter schools. We now had legislation passed last session that makes charter schools operable in all parts of the state. What is, this policy requires that applications have to be submitted by September 15th of the preceding school year. Then it sets up a review policy that the board will conduct before they grant somebody the right to start a charter school. So it just is putting in place rules so that if that request comes to us, we know how we're going to, how we're going to look at that request. We also have a request, a policy on disproportionality. Disproportionality is a, it's a term that refers to how our policies and our placement of students in classes, discipline issues, how it is related to race. So, for example, this has become a really big, hot topic in student suspensions across the country. And so the way disproportionality works is that if you look at your school enrollment, and let's say that you're 50% white and 50% minority. But if your suspensions of the number of kids suspended are 60% minority and 40% white, then you have at least an indication that there is disproportionality in the, in the suspension of minority students. This applies to enrollment in AP classes, participation in athletics. It is a new standard where it asks you to look at the percentages, the breakdown of students in gender, race, and make sure that your, that your students have an, have a representation that seems to be in correspondence to their percentage of the student body. It is obviously something that schools are struggling with as, and the reporting part of this is, is just going to be, the reports that we're going to have to generate to demonstrate whether we are or not disproportionate is going to be a real administrative burden. It's going to import, in, increase our reporting fourfold. But, you know, it's, I mean, it's federally required and it's just what we have to do. We have a change in the personal wireless devices. And what this, this makes, says, basically, it forbids Google Glass or similar technology. And Google Glass is what you attach to your glasses that allows you to take photos and see the internet and those kinds of things. And we are not allowing that on campus. We'll see how long that lasts. Probably like cell phones. It'll become something that everybody's got to have. See, we have a change in policy that would allow a registered sex offender, if he's the custo, if they're a custodial parent or legal guardian, they can only enter the school grounds to enroll their child after prior notice of the principal, deliver or retrieve their child during school hours, deliver or receive their child during, from district-sponsored extracurricular activities. There's been some, the law's been kind of vague. I mean, sex offenders are banned from campus, but it really has never said anything about what if that sex offender has a child. And so how do we deal with that? And this policy will give us some guidance on that. And then we have some changes that are not required by state law, but they're changes that were made in the negotiated agreement that need to be reflected in policy. And they deal with retiring support employees who have accumulated 15 years or more of experience in the school system. And it's, and this change, we will pay them $20 a day for every unused sick day, up to 180 days, something we already do for certified personnel. And then we're adding that, making that same change for administrators. We are requiring that administrators, when they retire, that they are retiring through the Oklahoma Teacher Retirement System. So you can't tell us you're retiring from Ponca City and you'll go to work in Edmond and get this. We're not going to, we're not paying that little stipend for your unused sick days unless you're actually retiring from teaching. Then we have some policy changes on support employees. And we have the, also personal business for retiring employees. And what this talks about is, again, after, after 15 years of service to the district, and if they are retiring through the Oklahoma Teacher Retirement System, then they can convert their unused personal business days to unused sick leave, cash in personal business days for $40 a day, or any combination of either option. So those are policy changes. If you have any questions or comments, I'll be more than glad to try to answer them.
Only question I would have for the universal ones, not the local ones, were those written by OSSBA? Is it standard wording everybody's going to be doing?
We use Rosen, Seafish, and Ringgold for ours.
Okay.
The Education Law Forum at Tulsa writes our policies. And they look pretty similar to what the school board generates. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Pennington. All right. Let's move on to the consent calendar. Need a motion to approve the consent... Need a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Tru?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to six point one, consideration of vote to approve the following district financial reports. There are reports listed A through R in discussion.
We covered these pretty thoroughly in the Finance Committee, so I'd move to approve six point one, A through R, unless anybody's got a question.
Second.
Motion seconded. Call for the vote?
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Tru?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Thank you. Six point two, consideration of vote to approve two applications for deregulation for OAC 210-35-943 from the Oklahoma State Department of Education. Shelley, do you want to address these for us real quickly?
Sure. We're requesting your approval for deregulation of teachers to teach during their planning period. One is for edgenuity class, and it's a credit recovery class. We have one teacher that supports that class. We have one teacher that supports that class, and we have, he's a coach, and we need six sections. We have a teacher come over from the alternative school to teach that class while he's coaching, and then we have enough students to be supportive for him to teach during his planning period. And he did this last year as well. With our limited number of staff members, we don't have enough people to cover. The other one has to do with the astronomy class at Poe High. We want our students to have as many opportunities for multiple science courses as can be offered. And currently, we don't have a course for astronomy, but we do have a certified teacher that would teach a section of astronomy second semester during her planning period.
Okay. Any other questions for? Call for the vote? Or call for the motion?
I want my motion to.
Second.
Motion seconded. Call for the vote, please.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Tru?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Thank you. Six point three, consideration of vote to approve the following contracts agreements for the 2015-16 school year. Memorandum of Understanding between Ponca City Public Schools and Pioneer Technology Center for the Dropout Recovery Program called SHARE. Agreement for two software licenses with edgenuity for online courses at the senior high school and Wildcat Academy. Agreement with Lynda Johnson to provide psychoeducational services for 2015-2016 school year. An agreement with Sandy Haldick to provide psychoeducational services for 2015-2016 school year. And agreement with Sunbelt Staffing for Healthcare Professional for the 2015-2016 school year.
Barbara, I just want to talk about these a little bit. The SHARE program is a program I think we've been doing in K County now for about ten years, and it's proven to be very successful. These are students that have dropped out of the Ponca City schools, and really, schools from across this county, and they go to SHARE, and they receive an academic education half the day, and the other half of the day, they start receiving training in a vocational trade. And so we've seen lots of success with that program. Those students are never on our campus, okay? In the past, when we first started this, we paid the Career Tech System a hundred dollars a kid, and then they discovered very quickly the program is more expensive than that. The last few years, we've paid them fifty percent of our state aid that those students generate, and this year, they've asked that we change that to seventy-five percent. Again, we don't serve these kids, we don't staff these programs, so, you know, we kind of look at this as a win-win for us. Definitely helps our kids and generates a little bit of revenue for the school district. Edgenuity has been our, the backbone of our credit recovery and online education program in our alternative school for a number of years. The two agreements you see for psychoeducational services, what we're talking about there is doing assessments to determine whether or not students need to be placed in our special education programs, or maybe they're reeval testing. We have to, a student who's receiving special education services has to be tested every three years. What's important about these, and the reason they're here, just remember that Dr. Jim Powell, who's been our school psychologist for a number of years, retired. And Jim Powell did this for us, along with another staff member. We could not find a school psychologist. We couldn't find a school psychologist through our traditional hiring practices, and even the firms that we contract with to provide us special education, speech pathologists, other special education teachers. Even though they agreed to find us, a school psychologist could not do so. And so that's why we're contracting with these two individuals. And, you know, and the last one is also a special, just another indication of when we talk about, you know, what do we mean when we talk about a teacher shortage? Well, it's not just classroom teachers. It's anybody that works in the school system. Psychologists, therapists, speech pathologists, special education teachers.
Other questions?
And remember, by law, we're required to provide these services.
Yeah, we, again, talked about these all in pretty, pretty good detail in the Finance Committee. I think Barbara's to be commended on the edgenuity. She went for a three-year contract that's going to save us forty thousand dollars, something like that, to do a three-year versus three separate one-year contracts. So that's why this one was converted from a one-year to a three-year. Only question I would have, Dr. Pennington, and I missed it the first time, the two psychoeducational services, they're at different rates. We just couldn't negotiate enough for...
That's what they charge. We, that's...
Could you do a hundred and fifty with the second person that's cheaper?
No.
Okay.
Well, in the second, the one that has the cheaper rates also charges some per diem, which the other one doesn't, so it'll kind of balance out.
Motion to approve A through E.
Second. Second. Second.
Mrs. Tru?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Six point four, consideration of vote to approve change order number five for the Lincoln Elementary School HVAC and Reriff Project. I see this as a credit for the unused contingency funds of twenty-five thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars and eighty-six cents. Like, we'll take all the credits we can get while we...
I'll move for approval.
Thank you. Second. Call for the vote?
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Tru?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Six point five, consideration of vote to approve accepting the bids for the trout remodel and classroom addition for a total of five-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-seven-seventy-five. I believe these are the four items that were, needed to be rebid from the original bid. So this is the rebid amount. Any questions or discussion?
I make a motion that we approve six point five.
Thank you. Second.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Tru?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Six point six, consideration...
Do you guys have anything you'd want to talk about this project? Are you ready to get started, or fired up?
We're starting.
I figured, yeah.
You know, we're, we're, football contracts out there, one in the process of some metal for ready getting one.
Good. Sure looked good. I did want to say, since we're talking about projects, I did, Brett and I went to Woodlands, got to look at it, since I'm not going to be here for the, their open house, and it was really nice. Really turned out really, really good. I was really pleased. I love the walls that they put in, down the hallways and stuff, the tile that you used in there. It was really nice. I really like it. Looks awesome. Think you get all the teachers, I just worry, are they going to be ready by the time school starts? But I think they will, so. Looks really good.
Thank you.
Good job.
Six point six, consideration of vote to approve accepting the guaranteed minimum price, or maximum price, I'm sorry, GMP for the trout remodel and classroom addition. This will bring the guaranteed maximum price in total up to two million, five-seventy-nine, Any questions or discussion? Is there a motion?
Yes. Six point six.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Tru?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Thank you.
And since we're talking about Woodlands, just to let the board know and the newspaper, we are going to have an open house at Woodlands this Sunday, isn't it, Brett, the nineteenth, the sixteenth, from two to four. And obviously, we hope the community will come out and take a look through the school and see what changes we made. It no longer looks like a building that was built in fifty-five? Fifty-five, fifty-six, I think, is when it opened. We'll get another fifty years out of it.
Okay, thank you very much. Six point seven, consideration of vote to approve accepting a quote from Evans and Associates Construction Company to construct a new parking area at Roosevelt Elementary School. Total cost of this is twelve thousand, nine-hundred dollars. It's in the area where the old, the little house was torn down next door.
Right.
Any discussion?
It's only going to be room for eight to nine?
It's not a very big space, Judy. We had to, we, and we couldn't do anything, you know, we couldn't do anything with it to help traffic flow, because it's not a big enough space. And we had to leave some of it uncovered, otherwise, we would have had water runoff issues to deal with. So this is basically all we could get and not have to do, spend a whole lot of money on diversion of water. But if we maybe obtain some of that other property later on, you know, someday, we can maybe fix that circulation problem we have.
I'll make a motion for six point seven.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Thank you. Call for the vote?
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Tru?
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Six point eight, consideration of vote to approve accepting the bids for the Union Elementary School Reriff Project pending the attorney's approval.
This was a roof that we, this is insurance money. We had hail damage to the roof at Union, and we bid that project out last week, and Brett, you got anything to add? It's going to be kind of the same kind of roofing we've done the last few years.
It's the same, it's the same product that's on it. It's Bure last roof, same one we've been doing for a long time. Fairly local person who's done some roofs got that, got that bid. Gary needs to look at the bonds and insurances, that's what he's going to make sure it's okay.
Is that in the pitch drill?
Excuse me?
Is that a pitch drill?
No.
No.
What kind of it is? If you get a look, it is like this, and you just can't see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's got a little pitch to it, but it's...
Motion to approve it.
Second.
Okay. Call for the vote?
Mrs. Tru?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Thank you. Six point nine, consideration of vote to approve, propose to executive session for the following purposes: discuss possible termination, reassignment, resignation, employment of personnel; to discuss confidential conversations with the board's attorney; to discuss the purchase or appraisal of real property; and to discuss negotiations. Do I have a motion to go to executive session?
I'll make a motion, go to executive session.
Second.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Tru?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. We have executive session. Let's return to open session. Minutes of the executive session were kept by the board minutes clerk, and will remain confidential. Going on to six point one-two, vote to approve recommendations for termination, reassignment, resignation, employment of personnel.
I'd recommend on the personnel report, or just a correction, Kevin LaRue was listed as an assistant football coach, and he is no longer serving as an assistant football coach for the district since he has taken an administrative position. So I would recommend approval of this report with the correction of removing Kevin LaRue's name.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion for six twelve.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Tru?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Okay. Consideration of vote to approve the negotiated agreement with Ponca City Public Schools Association of Classroom Teachers for the 2015-2016 school year pending ratification by the ACT.
Motion to approve six point three.
Second. Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Tru?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
New business.
We did have the negotiated agreement on the agenda, so we won't have to do that under new business. I would just want to let the board know that Marvin and myself, Brett Smith, and Brenda Story, along with Mary Ladd and Barbara Davis, had the opportunity last Friday to go to the Oklahoma Education Hall of Fame banquet, where Dr. Bill White was inducted to the Oklahoma Education Hall of Fame. And we had, it was a great turnout for Dr. White, not only a good contingent from Ponca City, but from his, his local church there, Quell Springs, and then the work he does with the Oklahoma Disaster Relief Group. So it was obviously a point of pride for all of us to see one of our own, or receive that honor.
Any other new business? Being done, I need a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.